Um.
My calls meeting in order.
At seven o'clock.
At seven o'clock.
I had.
On this beautiful June twenty fourth of twenty twenty five. First off, approve the minutes of June tenth, twenty twenty five.
I move be through minutes of June tenth, twenty twenty five.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion and update on social equity plan with application and scoring rubric for marijuana businesses.
Do you need to use it?
Can you guys hear us when we're talking? Maybe the people?
Nothing.
Uh?
It's okay, um, it's a little muffled, but it's okay.
Is this, is this better? Whoops, I turned it off.
You muted, don't worry.
Testing. Testing, testing.
Okay. Is this better, Delilah?
It is for me. I don't know about others, but it is for me.
Hello. Um, so, we were gonna talk about the, I think what we're really talking about here, since we already, um, voted on the policy part, our part of it, what we're really talking about is Schedule A, the application, and it's really hard to hold this thing while you're also trying to turn pages, and Schedule B, no.
Yes.
Yeah, the application requirements, and then Schedule B is the host community agreement evaluation form and the rubric. And that's what we haven't, we can play with, but we haven't so far. And it looks to me like on the Schedule A application, I think it would be the select board who would be enabled to say what the amount of the, uh, cost should be, the application cost, app- application fee. And it's supposed to be roughly to cover the cost of the submission review. Um, I don't know how you determine that cost. I don't have, but, I don't, what are other, what, what, well, who knows what the special permit fee is?
Um, through the plant, one of the planning boards do it?
Yes, if, if somebody applies for a special perk.
I think it's somewhere in the vicinity of seventy-five dollars. Um.
That sounds like a good number to me. I think this is about the same amount of review.
There can be a service.
Me. Exactly.
Okay.
I, I think that's what it is, but it depends on how much you are going to doing.
Well, I think these are so infrequent.
And do we know what any of, any, what any other towns do?
Well, I could, I could certainly ask K P Law that, that will have another bill next month to sign.
That's okay, sure.
Um, because they, they have a person who looks at most of the passes in the state.
Yes.
Um, but.
Uh, I mean, I think that's not a lot in the.
Well, maybe we could say, um.
Hold on, there's your two hundred.
I think we should want to now what.
Yeah.
The towns are, are general, what, what the range is.
I think, I think we can do that, but I also think that for the purposes of getting this, we'll be, because we do have something waiting in line. We could say not to, uh, be less than seventy-five dollars per submission. And this is subject to change, something like that, so that we can get, I just heard Daniel's gonna call him next day. Alright, so applying outrage, that's the question. Alright, and then, um, if either of you have comments or questions on parts of this, I'm just gonna go directly to the application. Um, so, basically, we can't exclude any, I wanted to exclude license types to, to just show the ones that we allowed. And the lawyer said unless you have a bio, the fact shot up, you can't do that, which we're trying to work on getting, and that's, that was coming for next year. So, I think that leaves the metrics. And I don't know how we wanna do this. There are ten different categories that we have discretionary in quarters. And then the eleventh category is that we have no set, cannabis commission gets that one. So, did people have thoughts about how they wanted to?
Sure, there was fifteen.
I, I thought that, um, cannabis business, that the applicant has a complete business plan and management and operations team demonstrating prior experience in commercial cannabis ventures or other relevant experiences in relative fields. I thought that was important and probably deserved relatively more weight than say, for instance, um, I think it was, um, location and traffic management. I don't think traffic management is a huge issue on Broome Street, which is dead end, and the cannabis operations are at the dead end of the Broome Street. Call me crazy. So, I would, I would do that, I would wait that one much less. I don't know if he could go as low as zero, because I think, I think I would.
That would, I don't think I have experience.
Okay. And then, um, alright, so I, I'm not putting numbers on it at this point, I'm just telling you which ones I move up, and which ones I move down, and then somebody else can weigh in. Um, diversion and prevention, a plan for preventing diversion in, of cannabis and prohibiting access to individuals under the age of twenty-one or under the age of eighteen for medical patients. Um, I don't have particularly strong feelings about that. I don't think it would be a huge problem.
I hope that, I hope.
Jerry, Jerry's gonna stand up.
Yeah, my, my question is, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yep, okay, my question is, is this being done one time for any applicant, or does it get revised per applicant?
No, this is, this is, we, this is a new policy that the state mandated two years ago that every town in Massachusetts have a social equity and host community agreement policy. And as an attachment to that policy, there is an application procedure, an application form, and a rubric on how their application will be evaluated by the town. And this is the rubric, this will, and then that has to be submitted with your policy to the cannabis commission. We were supposed to have complied with that by May first, but it kind of flew by us. We didn't know we had to do it. And when I called to ask about the policies, I had, I had some question about cannabis for, for KP Law, and spoke with their cannabis specialist, and she said, well, you know, you haven't done your host community, your equity and host community agreement policy yet either.
You're, you're not answering my question. My question is, for instance, you're saying because this particular one is on Broome Street, that the, uh, let's see, what was the topic? The location and traffic management should get a low score, but maybe another applicant would be totally different and be right in the center of town or something, take a high score. That's why I'm asking, is this a one-time thing that goes forever, or is it for each applicant, we can change those numbers?
Ever. I think it's, it is intended to be a standard rubric that we use to compare all applicants for cannabis licenses in Plainfield so that we can demonstrate to the cannabis commission that we are being fair and equitable with all potential applicants. And so, I mean.
Not to me, since you're saying that once this is done, that, that's it. So, you're, you're putting a low score on. You're putting a low score on Broome Street, but that's gonna be a low score forever.
No, I, I understand your point.
You don't.
I mean, we, we haven't assigned any values to things yet. I, I just don't think traffic control around cannabis in Plainfield is a big issue. And you can disagree with me if you want, that's fine. But for me, I don't think traffic control in Plainfield is a big issue, except on, maybe the speed limits on one sixteen and South Central Street.
This is for, not for children's applications, for anybody that comes in.
Right, that's what I'm saying. It's for all applicants.
Okay.
This is the standard by which all applicants will be evaluated.
So, off the, uh, label.
Yeah, exactly. And, and you're not, you're not adjusting the scoring mechanism for each new applicant. You have a scoring mechanism. Now, we can probably revisit that policy on an annual or biannual basis. I would think that would be pretty reasonable. As we get more experienced, we might wanna change it, but it's intended to be for all applicants for cannabis businesses.
Okay, that, that answered the question. I thought, I still agree that probably traffic for any client, and our town's probably not gonna need a high score, but I was just curious whether this is a one of, or it's adjustable per. Sounds like it's one of.
Okay. Okay, uh, can we, we're never gonna get through this at this rate, but Delilah, did you have a question? No, you sure? Okay. Um, so diversion is a plan for preventing young people from getting their hands on it. I think that, personally, I don't think it's as big an issue when you're only doing cultivation and production as if you had distribution, transportation, a retail outlet, that kind of thing. But there needs to be something, and, and I think that that is also related to security. So, I would sort of leave the diversion and prevention at the average weight, and I, I would increase the security a little bit higher. Um, and that, that one is the applicant's security plan clearly demonstrates that it meets professional standards, was prepared by a qualified professional, and has been reviewed by the local police and local fire departments. The plan includes an operational security plan, including but not limited to general security for visitor access and inventory control, employee training, and general security policies. I kind of think of that and diversion as being similar, but not like that.
But did you say that you would be diversion as a good, because if you wanna up another category, you have to take folks off.
Well, I have others.
I took for that.
Well, you could.
That's okay, go ahead.
I, I, I'm hoping to persuade you. Um, energy environmental, applicant has applied the energy efficient and recycle where possible. The applicant will meet or exceed cannabis control commissions. Energy regulations and standards, um, I, I, I would increase that one a little bit, not, not hugely, but small. Just because I think that you care a lot about energy conservation, and I think the conservation commission would get all of us if we can weight that a little bit more. Um, consumer education, applicant has provided adequate consumer education materials or a plan to develop the materials before commencing operations. I was a little puzzled by that one.
I think that's, to me, that felt more, you know, retail and that, medical.
That's what I thought too. I mean, what are we gonna do? Teach them how to, educate them on how to grow?
Oh, yeah, we do that.
I mean, that's what a cultivation operation would be educating about everything. So, I, I would, I would make that one lower. Um, local involvement and nuisance mitigation. The applicant has demonstrated a plan to positively impact the local community to implement nuisance control measures. And to be a good business neighbor, the applicant has planned consistent with applicable laws and regulations to make good pay the efforts to hire municipal residents for employment, suppliers, services, and or vendor services. The applicant has received letters of, and testimony of support from community members of others, community organizations, and or other stakeholders. The applicant has provided mechanisms for responding to future feedback from community members. I mean, again, I'm just, I'm just throwing out one person's perspective, and people can react to it. Um, I think that local, the local involvement of the cannabis operation and any nuisance mitigation is very important. And that people in town would care a lot about being able to have a say in that. I think that, um, and obviously, we want them to comply with the laws. I don't know how much I would wait applicant has received letters and testimony of support from community members and of others. I don't think, there's only one business in town where we knew the person before they applied for the license. So, I don't think a lot of people would write it. I could be wrong. It just seemed a lesser, it was less critical to me. Um, location and traffic management, I already specified how I feel about that. I just don't think traffic control is a big issue here. Um, timeline. The applicant chose a reasonable, reasonable proposed timeline for commencing operations, including but not limited to permitting licensing from the commission, inspections, construction, et cetera. And I said, man, why do we care about that? It's his business investment on the line, even the longer it takes, and, and those are all things that are outside of our control. So, I would make that one probably below us, because if he wants to apply for a license, he go through all this hassle and pay a fee, and then not be able to bring it to fruition. Sister. Um, compliance, applicant demonstrates an understanding of local laws, state laws, and federal laws concerning cannabis. The applicant demonstrates willingness to work local law enforcement if necessary. The applicant demonstrates the ability to comply with commission regulations. I was, yes, of course, that's kind of an obvious one, but I wouldn't move it up or down. I would just keep it at the average. Um, labor and employment. Um, the applicant has described a plan for hiring local vendors and employees. Advocate over by benefits to employees such as healthcare, education, or medical leave to the degree that they have offered as part of the plan. And, um, I think that's, I think that's great, but I also, I don't think we have a particularly large employment pool here in town. So, again, I didn't place.
It's also states, I might start to do a lot of stuff too.
Right. So, so that's where I was.
We quite agree. Um, I was bumping the same ones you were.
Mm-hmm.
Downing the same ones you were. Um. Compliance, I went up, I went up. I would be talked out of that. So, I think the harder thing is wanting to be tied, how is that excluded? There are ten categories here. Those ten categories add up to seventy-five points. It's the other twenty-five points we have no control over. So, we're just trying to figure out how to distribute, trying to figure out how to distribute those seventy-five points. It would seem like you're mostly in agreement. Which to move, which way? I don't know how we get to exact numbers without.
Go for it.
Without taking, actually, the meeting.
Well, let's, here, I'll, I'll, I'll throw out the numbers that I had, and we'll see, see if they add up. That's, that's always a question. So, I put cannabis business knowledge at a ten, weighting of ten. I put diversion prevention at seven point five. That was just average.
I was moving, I thought you said, I thought you said you downed that.
I thought I had, but it looks like I didn't. But we could, that, that could be, it's just, yeah, we're doing it in pencil. Um, energy and environmental, I made that ten. That's okay. Energy and environmental, I made that ten, because I think that this is a town where people really care about that stuff. Consumer education, I made that five. Uh, security, I made that fifteen. Did people do, uh, that? Uh, I had to add these up while I'm doing that, so I know if I had any more points, I'd have to go. I mean, finance, and cannabis. Um, but that's. And then, um, local involvement in nuisance mitigation, I'd make ten. Location and traffic management, I'd make five. I could throw down on that, but if you move it to. Um, whoops. Timeline. I would give that one a zero if we can. I mean, I just, I just don't think that's a big consideration for this cap. It might be a big consideration for a larger city, where they're getting lots of revenue from, from commercial businesses, and they have a split tax rate, and they have differential, you know? But it, it just seems to me that that one isn't important, so let's make it two. I'm gonna talk myself into something else. Compliance, seven point five. And that would make labor and employment three. That's how many points we have left.
We are fairly close, except for, um, the diversion prevention, I went down to two. Okay, because I really thought that that dealt with, um, a weak cap.
Or distribution, you know, if you're, if you're driving it around, you will come on by the side or something.
I, I let the old consumer education put that down to two.
Okay. Alright, so diversion, you put that two?
No, the urban, oh, yes, both of those were two, sorry.
Divergent and. Then two.
Divergent is three.
So, what did you have? Did you do the other?
My local, well, like I'm saying, we're, we're pretty close on everything else. I was just talking about, we're, we're, we're far, far.
Okay.
Having played with numbers. Um. I, I was up on labor and labor edge and flooded.
Okay.
Um.
Where'd you put that?
I, I moved that to a ten.
Okay.
Um. I was thinking beyond Plainfield. I was thinking more of.
The hill towns, pretty much.
Hill towns, rather than pulling folks up from the valley. Um, I don't know that we have any say over what benefits are provided.
It's all state and everybody.
I'm sure it is, but employer does have the choice of giving, um, high-end benefit package or low-end package, and I, I'm as long as make state.
Okay.
Um, but I'm, I think we'll.
I think that's fair. Where'd you do that timeline on?
What's that? Uh, it's like five ninety-two, five is mine. I went down on it, not as far as you. Um. I was trying to imagine a circumstance. We have three in town. I can't imagine we have another, or a town. Uh, but it's any circumstance where someone, prepare land is, is, uh, we need to be sold, and someone is dragging, but is moved far enough, won't you see what I'm saying?
I think that a property is having trouble selling because there's a cannabis business that's slated to be running next door, and it hasn't really started up, and then.
Right, and it's not, so.
Because that's what Karen played by, her counter, over government park.
So, I didn't wanna nullify the time. I came down from their southern path, down to five. Um.
Well, the, the also, the other thing about timeline is that,
Okay.
the other thing about the timeline that I was thinking, I, I think that's a really strange scoring point on a rubric, because they don't control the licensing. They don't control the timeframe, I mean, and the cannabis commission is notoriously slow in issuing licenses. They don't control the special permitting process. That's the town's planning board. And that's not a simple process. I, that's fairly lengthy. Um, and it requires COVID hearings and all this kind of thing. So, the only, and I guess the only thing they really would have any direct influence on would be getting things inspected and getting things built. You know, constructing the facility, right?
Mm-hmm.
Because the permitting and the licensing are handled by somebody else. So.
And I know we, we got, we did, we did receive the, um, a rough timeline from our third.
Oh, we know what his timeline is. He wants to be in the ground by next summer.
Yes.
He wants to plant next summer. So, he's, that's why he's eager to get his application into cannabis culture. Because he knows that they are notorious for slop. So. So, where are we? Do you have, anyone, are you gonna break this up?
Guys doing a good job.
Here, if you can, if I score seven. Numbers. I don't know if you can do this. There was.
Here is my numbers. There is.
I'm putting this down for just the many guys, okay? Because I can use this and also the whole map.
One hundred and fifty-nine, three hundred and fifty-four, Josh.
Yep.
Alright.
It's our page.
I can't, I can't see, see how we're doing, especially if you have to do that.
Well, and we wanna just be adding them up. Let's see, we took, um, so what did yours add up to? Yours added up seventy-five. Okay, so.
Something's there.
Oh, so you weren't just concerned about the security aspect? Well, I think that's where, that's.
Have there been, Justin, have there been any issues in security that the, or have we had?
No, no issues. He's got a state-of-the-art camera system, the one on Bow Street. Uh, he showed me his, I'm sorry, on Grant Street. He showed me his, and he's got an up-to-date, really nice system he just put in. So, they're, they're doing a really good job. We haven't had any issues.
But they have had, and no people have ever tried to jump the fence or anything and get in and harm us on their, on personal behalf.
Well, I'm trying to think, don't, uh, Broome Street, all we have is, uh, car kept turning around, so he had it all on camera. That was it. That's really, I don't wanna say that. I don't wanna say.
Like, like Spencer, like, retail.
Yeah.
Uh, you can, but we won't pay adventure to that. Yeah, I don't need that.
Dave, the fire department, the, well, insurance, I don't know if the chief went over it, because two proposals?
Yeah, he did, but that had really his area.
Okay, or lost, did he?
The only thing that I, I, I looked at things, um, we have been with, um, V F I S, um, that's, um, ever since we've had police and fire insurance, um, no one else was ever able to quote on it. And now Maya has been able to quote. Maya's saying there is a better policy for a lower price in looking, and then, I do not see that the comparison is apples to apples.
Right.
I don't know what you felt when you looked at it, um, because still.
I don't understand most of it, but.
I, I don't really, I mean, I don't wanna make a recommendation, but we do have to have insurance. Maybe we need, um, maybe we need to wait another year or a week, so.
Right, you should probably just keep what we call the U's, I would say.
We're doing.
Or, yeah, I mean, fully vampire.
The only concern we have is the eighty stack. The only concern we have is the age factor.
Okay.
No, there's not.
Is that what's severe?
There is an age factor with.
No.
I don't know. You don't think they're doing it.
No, that's where Rob was kind of.
Right, and that, it didn't save in what we're looking at, but yes, there is, um, uh,
And you wanted that.
Age seventy factor.
Actually, the Maya proposal, what Rob was saying was sixty-five.
Yeah, and that's sixty-five, and then there's a lot of problems.
Where, where we are right now, that's why we're with them.
Right, right. So, you know, maybe we.
I did ten instead.
I, I don't know what you felt when you read it.
I think I agree with this.
Then that's, that's why I sent it.
I mean, fire chief, we won't let her, they are just, I mean.
They look so.
Diversion prevention.
I mean, I don't want to make instant notes about on their burden without some input.
Actually.
We have, I asked us a little higher than you, but I, I don't know if it's a mountain. It's more about the, what we're getting.
Right. I, I, if I can speak for, for Rob, I think he's okay. We would like to stay the course at least for this year.
For this year.
Okay, good.
If he, if that's what Rob was saying to.
I know, but I. Security.
Are we gaining?
We're, we're making progress.
Just a heads up that we can hear both conversations on the Zoom. It's a little hard to hear the main one because I think we, um, everybody's close to a mic.
Which one is the main one?
I, I can hear you and Care in addition to everybody else in the room. So I think maybe that the one that.
We're just going to, what she's getting, what she's done was to come together, but yeah, she can't hear.
No, she said she could hear us, but she couldn't hear everybody else. So we can't have two conversations going at the same time, is what she's saying. She's saying we need to have one conversation, and I think she's probably right. I'm sure she's right. Um, all right, I do fifteen on the security. And then, um, local involvement in nuisance, you wanted that fifteen? Uh, location and traffic management, so we're fine. Yeah. Well, let's leave that one for last because we have.
Okay.
Just.
That's where.
Compliance, I would take seven. And this you want ten? No, there's another line, but that's where the, that's the reason it doesn't have seven point five there. All right, so let's see where we are. Oh. All right, so we didn't do anything for timelines, and we are over by one and a half. So we have to move. How about if instead of ten? Well, we have to drop it by three and a half, was what you're asking. Yeah. Eleven and a half.
But now, now we're even.
Now we're at seven five.
So.
One and a half. Yeah, I, I'm gonna double check, trust me. I'm about, all right, so. Two left go. Where do you want to add? This is the lowest one. You think you should do that? Okay, because I do think that's. So that will be twelve. Yeah. All right, so where we are.
We're good.
I just want to confirm it for the record. So. Now we'll try it again.
Could you read off, could you read off the final numbers?
That's what she's doing.
That's what I'm gonna do, Jared.
Okay.
So then there are ten categories. Cannabis business, about a business plan, we gave that twelve. Diversion prevention, two points. Energy and environmental concerns, ten points. Consumer education, two points. Security, ten. Local involvement in nuisance mitigation, fifteen. Location and traffic management, five. Timeline, one and a half. Compliance, seven and a half. Labor and employment, ten.
That all adds to seventy-five.
What was labor and employment?
Ten.
Ten? Okay, the only one I missed was diversion prevention, the second one. What was that?
Uh, two.
How much?
Two.
Two? Okay. Thank you.
So, um, I move that we vote to accept the, uh, points allocation that we have just determined in this meeting. And, um, and that we set the, the application fee at no less than seventy-five dollars. And we will, um, get more information about the range of what other towns charge their application fee and may vote to amend that at a later point in time.
I will second that motion.
All favor.
I.
Dave, you're up.
Uh, actually, I'm talking with, uh, Rob, or texting Rob. And I'm, I have this question on the insurance, if you want to go to that first.
Okay, I need to one.
All right, so let's do the insurance, because I, this is very good. He does not have a preference that the age factor is no longer in issue.
Um, well, that's good.
So, uh, yeah, that's a huge list.
Would you repeat the what factor?
The age factor. How old you are. How old you are to be in public safety for the town.
And everybody's aged in.
And. So he doesn't, he, he said whatever town wants to do him. So if we want to switch, uh, we're happy with what we have right now. Uh, if, if it's not that big a difference, um, then I would like to stay, at least it's annual anyway.
Correct.
Stay anyway.
What do you have now?
VFIS. Oh, okay.
Sounds good, maybe.
Oh, um. I move that we, um, select the proposal from VFIS, Volunteer Firemen's Insurance Services, for our fire department insurance.
Second motion.
All in favor?
I.
Fire and police.
Oh.
Sorry.
It doesn't say that on our agenda.
But it's for both.
All right, all right.
Public thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, publicly.
Public thing.
Okay, so that one's not.
Dave on a nineteen eighty-eight GMC van.
Okay, so we are, and, oh, maybe I'll just move it down a small step, but I will pass. You can shut up. Actually, you can test it. Our, as, as we've been working with, uh, as you all know, a new truck, and it's taken us a lot of time on that, but it's going very well now. Uh, we have also been converting some equipment that we have. This includes, what I'm showing the Slackman right now is a nineteen eighty-eight GMC van. This is a has-been for the last ten years, and for the hill towns for the last thirty years. Uh, a mobile air truck. So in other words, a truck that goes and allows firefighters to replenish their SEBAs, their air supply at the scene rather than waiting. So, so this is for the great truck, but it's old. And we've, uh, this past winter, they converted the use of that truck into a trail, a rescue trail we have. We kind of combined some things, and we're able to, uh, therefore eliminate the van. The van sits in the Marantz, uh, one of the Marantz hayfields right now, and we think it has value. It does, definitely has value. We want to sell it, but I need to give you a little history on that. Because the, uh, the van initially was put together, uh, by Francis Dresser and the Gosheen ambulance way back when, uh, and fire departments. It was stored over there for many years. Uh, and all, all the work was, was volunteer. And, and when we got our new station, Gosheen's station isn't as large, they asked if, if we would be able to take on storing that vehicle. Recognizing the value of that vehicle, we of course said yes. But in order to have it covered by insurance, we had to, uh, transfer title, which we had done. There was no money involved in this because this was, uh, something that, there was no cost in the first place. So town basically got, received this, we took title, and we've been using the truck for almost the last ten years. We want to sell the truck, uh, and hopefully be able to convert that to additional public safety funds that we can then use. We would like to do this with the fire association. That would be easiest. Fire association can sell, that's what the fire association does. So that's what I'm here for.
So should.
Mic phone back.
Okay.
Same with here.
Sounds good, David. Paul?
Oh.
Sorry, Paul.
We need more than.
We're out there. Everybody likes it. This is not setting.
No, it's just because the people are on it. I think there's not a genuine. Okay, the last time, is this working?
You have to hold it right in front of your mouth.
Uh, okay, the last time that we turned a truck to be sold over to the fire association, it was, um, on a special town meeting warrant, um, to be given to the association. Just, um.
But are we making a donation or were we actually selling? They were on our behalf.
They were selling it. If, if, um, obviously they're looking for the, for the funds.
Right. Oh, this is going to the Plainfield Volunteer Firemen's Association so that they can sell it and get the money into the association.
Therefore, if this has to be done at, um, a town meeting.
Even though, even though this vehicle has not, did not cost town any.
What? If the.
There was no money involved at the initial.
There, there is not, but if the town puts it out to bid, then the proceeds are general fund money. Um.
Oh, so we're foregoing the potential value of the vest if we were to sell it by the town, but by giving it to the association, it automatically puts the money into, into a, no, it puts it into the volunteer plan. The Plainfield Volunteer Firemen's Association Fund, and that is a separate legal entity. That's a separate nonprofit.
Yes.
So we're basically giving away the value of the truck.
Yes.
I see what you're saying.
So we should get it on the next special town meeting.
And too bad we didn't know about this.
If that's the case, then we'll.
Well, yeah, especially.
Get that one tomorrow, but the next, can't do it tomorrow, but the next one we'll get it on and.
Okay. Have you any idea when that would be?
Well.
And if you go to a special town meeting tomorrow, it probably won't stretch to town meetings, won't be happening for what?
Well, I don't.
No, I mean.
A month or so.
Yeah, I think they'll, I'll think, I think we'll have another one before the fall, I guess.
I mean, we must pack.
I think we still have plenty of things that are played up, and who knows? There may be some motions from the floor tomorrow. There may be some motions from the floor tomorrow about things that were, things that we're doing, and some things may get tabled and carried forward. It, it feels to me like we're having special town meetings, like, you know, every month or so all spring.
Yeah, very disturbing.
I'm sorry.
Stop, Bob?
Yeah.
Bob, what'd you say?
We're having too many special town meetings.
Well, that's how things get done. So that's how it happens.
Um. I, I don't know what to say.
I do have a, I have a question for David, if he doesn't mind. What's his anticipated, what's the value of the, of the, of the, of the truck?
You don't know? I, I don't know what answer to your question. Uh, the truck has been, it's an old vehicle. It's nineteen eighty-eight. So, uh, it's whatever value it is on it. What? It's whatever somebody bids on it.
Right.
Roughly, we're talking like a, no more than a couple thousand dollars at most, right?
I don't know that. I, you know, someone might find that. It might be worth a lot.
Anything's better than giving it away or throwing it away.
It does run.
Yeah, yes. Yeah.
So sounds to me like we all pretty much agree that this is a good idea. But you have to go through the steps that you have to go through in order to make it happen.
And get the people here, both, that's all. With the special town meeting, then.
Yeah, I would say put on special town meeting soon as you can and quit it. Pay. That, that would be more than five hundred dollars.
Right.
Yeah. Reserve price of five hundred dollars. Won't sell it for less than five hundred pounds. Someone will buy that just to make that donation to the Volunteer Firemen's Association.
Yeah, but it's time to get more, huh?
Or somebody, somebody.
You can't advertise it. You can't advertise it. You can't sell it. So you could get two thousand.
Yeah.
Or you could, could be more.
Okay, so I think.
It's on you.
We can't do it. We scheduled a special town meeting.
I didn't. I just like to get that picture of that. Oh, I gave it to. And sorry, you let's see us.
Any other questions? Next, our favorite thing, K P law payment of one thousand forty dollars and forty cents.
I move that we take K P law of one thousand forty dollars and forty cents.
I will second the motion.
All in favor?
I.
Okay. Are you out?
At least, no, South Central Street, discussion about enforcing the speed limit on South Central in a letter that will be shared in the Plainfield Post.
Well, thank you for.
Well, thank you for listening to this and, uh, giving me airtime or whatever. Um. My main concern is. The law to enforcement of speed limit on South Central Street. I will sit, I sit in my office and I watch cars go by, and very rarely do I see anyone doing the speed limit.
Where's your office?
My office in my house, telling you on South Central Street. I have a very good view of. South Central Street from my office. I see that Eversource, Eversource trucks going probably forty or fifty miles an hour. Going down the road, I see.
How do you know that?
I'm taking a guess. It's, they are not going twenty-five miles an hour, I recognize twenty-five miles an hour. I see. Very few people, I rarely see somebody at my office or on Broom Street. And I just wonder about the possibility of buying the electronic devices, which will say what speed you're going. When you are going the speed, it says thank you. They use them in Covington, in Worthington. And every town.
In Windsor?
Windsor, and they are very, very effective.
Yeah.
I believe that a lot of people are not aware of how fast they're going. But ignorance.
Speed limit really is good as the people wouldn't pay that.
And ignorance isn't an excuse, and so. I think putting these up would be very helpful, having them on South Central Street. On one sixteen. I, just as a reminder, I believe the majority of people would go, oh my god, I didn't realize it's time, that's speed. And that's what I propose.
I think you're right, I agree with you.
On every road and every town and every place, speeding is an issue.
That doesn't, doesn't mean, it doesn't mean you do nothing about it, that they accept.
They sit on the road, they go by my house eighty miles an hour.
Yeah, and I'm trying to present.
Some of them have lost control on the corner and ended up in the bushes.
And I'm, I'm trying to present a solution which could help people.
They don't pay attention enough, but Justin.
Okay, right, right, Tom, so, I'm, I'm Justin Lachey. So we do say, I'm not gonna defend it, we can't get everybody, uh, but we do get people, like, you, you see me sitting on Broom Street. But what I can do for free is I'll call Mass DOT, they have the big radar boards, the big ones. And they can set them up and they're free, as long as I ask for them and set up times and dates and speeds that we wanna set them at. And they don't cost the town any money, I just have to request it. So we were doing that, we had a bad problem on, uh, Pleasant Street, so we were putting them down there, uh, we put them by the pond before, because they were going by too fast. For the, uh, kids swimming there, so I can request that and it won't cost us any money and then we.
Do you like those made a difference, Justin?
Yes, yeah, they're very, they're very good, the little ones are falling apart, they got them cheap, they're really cheap, battlefield gun, it keeps falling apart. I'm just saying that they are effective, but you also remember is, you have an active radar unit, shooting radar beams at you all day long. And there is sickness from that and stuff, so they're saying, cause we got trained in that, that, that thing is active. That head on that, that's getting your speed, is shooting radar all day long. So it doesn't shut off until the batteries die. So that, you know, I mean, as long as everybody's alright with that, I, I wouldn't wanna sit in front of a radar, we, we sit behind it. So it's shooting forward and coming back, but I'm definitely going to work with you, whatever thing you do, if you want more enforcement, call me, let me know, and we'll put the guys out there. And we'll sell them down, we can't always get everybody, but we can get a lot of them. And, um, the magistrate has came out, Darren, and checked our speed limit signs, so right now under ninety seventeen C. Their twenty-five speed limit zone is speed greater than reasonable and proper is how it's written in the law. So we can't get them for every mile an hour over, because it's under ninety seventeen C, so it's speed greater than, it's fifty, it's a hundred and five dollar ticket. So that's something we've been doing there, but, you know, just let me know and I got, I think I talked to you, I got your email. And you sent me an email and we're, we're out there, I'm just saying, work with us, tell me, let me know what's going on.
I spoke, I brought this up to you before, ran into you at the Creamery.
Yeah.
Couple years ago.
Yeah.
I haven't seen anything really changing, I rarely see somebody on Zine Street.
Okay, that's me, on Broom Street is me sitting there in a truck.
And.
Yeah.
I sit in my office for many hours a week and I very rarely see the other.
Yeah.
But up until two years ago, the speed limit was forty. All the way up to town.
Yeah.
All the way the whole length.
So.
So.
So it changed.
Yeah, you gotta get used to it, so.
Yeah, you, the people who speed, I can get used to it, how, how much time do you give people?
I don't know.
Justin, can you talk more about the, um, the radar? I, I understand what you're saying, it's on constantly, but is it?
It's a wide beam.
It goes out.
Probably wide beam farther you get, the wide, it's not a laser, a laser is the skinny gold beam radar, farther you go.
The wider.
The wider the beam is, so it's, you know, I'm not, just saying that, I'm not, I'm not trying to flip back news, I'm just letting you know my facts. Yeah, that's all, that's all we're just doing, facts, and I definitely can increase it there, um. I made, I made quite a few stops there, it may not be when you're sitting in your office, I, I, I get it, um. But like I said, I really have to know, because if you let me know, then I'll be like, alright, we gotta go do more there, because it's not just your road. It's Lloyd Street, it's Pleasant Street, it's North Street, it's Norton Union Street, it's by the pond now, the pond, the little kids are running down everywhere, we're trying to spend more time down there, there's the beach. And then it's West Street.
Right street too, I've got to complain about Breeze Street.
Yeah, yeah, I.
The tougher part.
Yeah.
Well, Delilah and Jerry have been waiting a long time to ask a question. Jerry was up first.
Okay, that just goes back in history a little bit for Justin, but back when we were in the ARPA funds. One of the things of the ARPA funds was getting a radar sign at the top of the hill of one sixteen coming into town. And if I recall, Justin, you had us take it off of the ARPA fund, because you had a grant to get it, I've never seen it.
And so what happened is we got the grant and time ran out, so we switched the meetings and we went to spend the money, and then the time went out, so. We couldn't, cause we had to use the money, they didn't, they don't give us money, what they do is we have to spend the money to get it. So I was working with Paula and we, we didn't know we timed out, so, bless you. So. We timed out on the grant.
Delilah, do you want?
Yes, thank you so much, um, and Justin, thank you for the, um, idea to work with, I think you said it was Mass DOT to get the radar speed signs up. So thank you for being willing to do that, I liked Alex's idea, um, of having the radar speed sign, I mean, I guess whether it's. You all monitoring the speed, the police department, or the radar speed sign, there's radar happening either way, so. Um, seems like that would be a good option to have the sign, because it sounds like with all the speeding or the problem areas, it's. A lot for two officers to try to monitor, so the signs seem like they're more consistent and would be there more often, I am curious. Um, you said it worked when it was up by the pond and it worked when it was, you mentioned one other place, Justin. Why did we take the speed signs down if they were working, cause one of the things I, um, was looking at some. Just different stories and things and what's working in different rural areas, I see what our like neighboring, um, towns are doing, and they're not removing their signs, they're leaving them up, I think. That I'm curious why we took it down.
So they're Mass DOTs, so when nobody wants to use them, we can have them as long as we want, then if there comes, people want to use them, then they take them away. But they are free and they're the good ones, so the big signs, and we, we'd like to get a trailer, but the trailer is only ten thousand dollars. Or a trailer, when we can just borrow Mass DOTs for free.
How much are the signs that they have, which they, they register your speed and they say thank you when you're going.
Yeah, those are between like fifteen hundred, three thousand, depends on what capabilities they have, some of them log your, um. They have a computer in them, they'll, they'll, they'll remember your speeds, they'll remember the time you're speeding, there's a lot of good data on them, and those, those are, um, but. You know, they're movable, so, I mean, they're good ones, they're just, as long as you don't mind having the radar on all of that.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, that's totally.
I think it would be a good idea that have one of the machines that does walk the speed.
Oh, yeah, no, that's a good idea.
Get very accurate, um. You know, data on what people really are doing on each road, and then that might, and at what time it costs to walk.
No, they do have timestamps.
Yeah.
Uh, those are a little bit more.
And then you would be able to maybe, uh, notice that, oh, maybe we should survey this area.
Yeah, that, that was in our plan, that definitely, that's one of the things, the plan, the grant, and it wasn't good to be changed.
Because, you know, we have a lot of people's speed.
Oh, we do, that's, that's one of our big problems.
Well, we could put it in speed ups too.
It works on both of them.
Yeah, what?
Works on both of them.
What, speed bumps?
Speed bumps.
But if we like that nice speed bump.
Makes a nice business.
Oh, tunnels on West Street work too.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm just, I'll, I'll end it, and I'm just trying to say that I'm definitely willing, if you let me know, let's talk more, I know it was two years ago. And you may not see it, but tell me the times, we'll talk about it and we'll try and make something happen, that's, that's.
I appreciate it, thank you, because it's.
Yeah, absolutely.
I stood out there clipping bushes and, and asking cars to slow down, I've had people flipping the bird, I've had to speed up, um. And. I have cats and I really don't want to lose another animal to somebody speeding down the road, yeah.
I, I fully agree.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Are there, is there, um. Medical data, I guess, about the effect of this?
Oh, there's a lot of stuff out there, yeah, radar's been around since the time.
Don't wanna point it at my house.
Yeah, I'm just saying this, you might have to Google it, um, they don't, they, they used to have. A long time ago, the guys would have the handheld radars, they would hold it between their legs. And then it would be on all the time, and a lot of people got sick from it, they used to have it shoot behind their head. And radar beams cook their eye, and there's been just a lot of different things, it's just, it's active radar. Uh, pointed at you, and that's, you know, when you're in a car and take a little dose of it, like the handhelds now, I just hit the trigger, it, it comes on for a second, it shoots out, comes back. Then that's the only beam going out, it's not a constant running. And, yeah, so, so there, there is a lot of different stuff, it is, I'm just saying that, that concerns me, um. But definitely enforcement, we'll, we'll definitely step it up and, um, I, I have a lot of them, we have a lot that we're trying to do. And it's summertime and the beach is a really big concern of mine right now. But South Central Streets, and to let me know about it, it's a concern too, absolutely, so.
Any other questions? Thank you.
And will we adjourn?
Oh, wait a minute, I have a question.
Oh, wait, Judy, Judy Gaddy wants to say something.
One eighty West Street, when Mark was here in May cleaning ditches, um. He told me that he was not gonna be able to pave the road like he had been planning to, because Eversource was coming back to. Install another bridge. I mean, they've been installing stuff for five years now and, and. Um, I'm just, they, they haven't, I haven't seen any sign of them coming to install the bridge, so I'm wondering if you know what's going on there? If anybody does know.
Well, Eversource is done, so Eversource doesn't ruin the new road, they don't have a timeline yet, but hopefully it'll get done before October. And then that's the goal as it is right now, so.
Uh, you said that Eversource plans to be done by October?
Well, no, our hopes is that they're done before then, so he can pave the road, he's not gonna pave it until they're done with their project.
Right. Yeah. Well. This is been on for awful long time and, and, um, it's getting pretty tiresome. So.
The federal is doing the project, so we can go on forever.
Yeah.
I'm wondering, in the meantime, some of the pop holes are really intense, if they can just be filled.
Maybe. Should be posted, highway, grass. First on vacation.
Oh.
Till next week.
Okay.
So, the guys around doing stuff with the company, they has a list to do, but. That's something we said something, you know, they're gonna be taken care of, so.
That's how it gets taken care of, just, oh, highway.
Yeah, big message.
Okay.
Anything else?
I move we adjourn.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.